Good evening. Welcome to the June 12th Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners meeting. Thank you all for joining us this evening. We'd like to call this meeting to order and we'll start with rising please for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Thank you. Before we enter our moment of silence, just one comment to share and pass along. Mr. Affman's wife's grandmother passed away a week before last and I'd like to keep Katie and Travis and your family in our thoughts and prayers and you guys are still moving forward and he said, "Take it a day by day." So I'd just like to keep you and your family in our thoughts. And with that, we will enter into a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Next up this evening is the Agenda Approval.
(Inaudible)
Second? Any comments or discussion? All those in favor, please signal saying aye.
Aye.
Any of those. We'll move in in just a moment to our public hearing. We have two public hearings this evening. First, I would like to give an official welcome to the Chairman of the Deer County Board of Commissioners. He's also a resident of Kill Devil Hills, Bob Woodard. Thanks for being with us this evening. And thanks, all of you. Obviously, it's not hard to see that we have a pretty big item on our agenda this evening, which is what brought the crowd out. This is not typically our attendance, we know that, but we do appreciate you taking your time this evening to come out and share with us and be with us as you're helping provide guidance on such an important issue. So, thank you. And with that, I will turn it over to our Town Attorney who conducts our public hearings.
Thank you, Mayor. As the Mayor stated, there will be two public hearings this evening. The following rules and procedure will apply to these hearings. A public notice of each hearing was published in the newspaper and posted on the town bulletin boards in accordance with statutory requirements for the subject matter. A copy of the public notice has been filed with the Town Clerk for entry into the official record of the hearing. The Town Clerk will record all oral comments in a concise and brief manner. Written statements shall be recorded in a similar manner and made part of the record of the hearing and shall be submitted in full to the Town Clerk. Please limit your comments to matters relevant to the issue and to a time period of three minutes. A five-minute exception will be made if there is a spokesperson for a group or if your statement is submitted in writing to the Town Clerk. All speakers, please come to the microphone so that your statement can be taped. There shall be no debates and please identify yourself when you come forward. All right, this first public hearing will come to order and this hearing is called for the purpose of the Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners to consider the following. It's a requested amendment to Chapter 153 zoning, Chapter 153.099D, specifically building height limits. Changes of development regulations for hotels and motels in the ocean impact residential zone, including increase in the allowable height subject to the additional criteria. The following individuals have indicated desire to speak and I'm going to call upon these individuals. There are two lists up here. I'm going to call from the public hearing comment list first. There was also a sign-up sheet for public comments. I'm thinking that these very well may overlap, however, I will start with the public hearing comment sheet. So excuse me if you had signed up for another person, but we'll go that way because that's about the only way I know how to do it. So I'm gonna go, I'm gonna try the last names here. Raymond Vertula?
Yep.
Is that correct?
Yeah. Hello, I've been a property owner here for about 20 years up at 1019 Virginia Deer Trail. When I saw the request for the change on the building height limits, I'm a little bit concerned about the increasing of heights of commercial buildings on the beachfront. Like, the area of my concern really comes down to three areas. First, aesthetics, just the change in the aspect and the attitude of the neighborhood. One of the reasons I purchased property out here 20 years ago was because of the aesthetics and, if you will, slightly less developed nature of the beachfront. I have a second concern, which is, as you allow larger buildings and taller buildings, we stress and already stressed infrastructure out here in roads, sewers, garbage collection, and all the related things that go with that. The other thing I was thought about was as a blanket change to the rule. Personally, and again, I don't know what the rationale is, but it would seem to me that if there were an individual need for a taller building, that a variance could be requested and approved if necessary, if there were some sort of real structural need for this sort of a change. And the last thing, I guess, is what advantage to Kill Devil Hills is there in making this change? And I, that'll... Thank you, God.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vertula. Matt Walker?
Matt Walker, 439 West Walker Street. I'm here, obviously, to speak in opposition again. I've obviously come a couple of times, submitted a couple of letters. My points are more or less the same, mainly, I've yet to see where the community has asked for this in any way, shape, or form, and still to this day, I've yet to hear anyone except for some special examples who say they do want it. Two things that I have heard since speaking out, one seems to imply that this is a reaction to the McMansion issue. You know, we have all these McMansions and we've got to do something about that, but I fail to see how increasing allowing letting hotels go higher somehow stops McMansions from being built as well. In fact, I think it sets up for the next stage of development to 20 years from now to go, "Wow, what are all these hotels doing here?" I think throughout this discussion, there's been sort of this idea that somehow people are going to stop being greedy and stop maxing out the ability of what they're going to do. And I think you can look around and see the difference of the last 30 years, that give people an inch, they'll take it, and apparently they'll ask for another inch if they don't like it. So let's find out about the community things before we move any farther. How about that for a start? Before we change a rule, let's maybe look and really see, because as of last I checked, it was still a pretty, what, 89% was the last 90s plan? Let's maybe work on another one of those and then find out where we are. And if people do want it, well then, by all means, I also suggest that if we really move forward before we do this again every two years or six years, maybe sell it to the people first, so that, you know, give me a reason. Give the community a reason why it does make sense on the front side, so what we're going to do is come out and hear about it, react to it. I understand that there's been some letters written maybe in support of it by, say, the Chamber and the OBRA. Maybe come to us too with some sort of this sales point. But I understand that's where I actually got the McMansion subject, because I hear that's kind of one of the sales pitches, we're going to get rid of these, we're going to push back, and I just don't see how that makes sense. I'm kind of rambling now, I apologize, but yeah, please, let's, don't do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks.
Mark Nassi?
Hello, everyone. I'm a Kill Devil Hills resident, property owner, you know, 25 years, so to speak. And in regard to this proposed increased height limit, the points I wanted to make is, as a Realtor, I'm a board of the Outer Banks Association Realtors. My understanding is that the plaintiff, so to speak, has said we've endorsed this proposal. I think that we have 1,200 members. I was not polled or questioned. My 15 office members that I questioned do not recall that. So I think if that's a support, it doesn't represent the membership of the Association of Realtors for what it speaks, so I don't think that holds by the way. Living here, helping people make their real estate decisions, buying a property, selling a property, hey, it's been a good run. My opinion is that most people who determine this change would be a negative effect on their property values, whether they're selling their property, they've had a, enjoyed, or buying a property. And the people buying property, the future taxpayers, your constituents, they are very knowledgeable. They ask me, "Hey, listen, what are the setbacks? What's the lot coverage? You know, what's the septic capacity? What are the parking departments?", which is a myriad of regulations, right? And they want to know, "Hey, what can I do with my property? What can the neighboring properties do? How will this affect my, you know, environment?" And they make decisions to buy property and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars based on that. So to change that for no reason and no hardship, it appears to me, for the benefit of a very small percentage who knew those rules going into it at the same time, seems like a detriment to the majority of your constituents, you know? And so that's not a scientific poll, but from driving around with families, walking around, helping them purchase properties in Kill Devil Hills, between the highways and in front of these hotels, where are we going to go to the beach? What's going to develop here? Hey, if they tear down this, what can happen? They make decisions based on the current rules. And to change them for really no benefit to the majority of the public seems like pulling the rug out from under them. Yeah, so those are my comments. And my opinion would be against raising this height limit. And the majority of the people I know and work with, you know, would agree with it. You know, so I think like Matt said, this would be something that's significant enough that would require sort of some referendum or official vote versus the decision of, I mean, the whole population should be involved with this, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Harris?
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, my name is John Harris. I'm with Kitty Hawk Heights and I live in Southern Shores. And I believe for a healthy tourism economy, which what I have 43 years of experience with, that we need a diversity of accommodations. We need, let's see, we need rental houses, we need rental condos, we need rental hotels, we need hotels, we need campgrounds and RV parks for a diverse offering for our vacationers. And I certainly believe that hotel rooms have their place. In, you know, my 43 years of experience here, I've watched every year the number of hotel rooms shrink in the community. And that has, I think, impacted all of our businesses significantly. There's less and less opportunity every year for vacationers, for first-time vacationers to experience our area with a one-night stay or a two-night stay. It's hard to find. I also think that the diversity of accommodations and having more hotel rooms would help our off-season business significantly. And that's all business, all retail businesses, recreation businesses, and restaurants, and all businesses on the Outer Banks. People often don't have the time to spend a week or even three days for a vacation down here. Some people get a day, some people are lucky enough to get two days, but they don't often have the time for the accommodations which a lot of our accommodations offer. And it would be great for us to have more short-stay opportunities for our visitors. And as I mentioned, I do think it would boost the off-season business for everyone and help the economy broadly. Right now, the ordinance has seemed to favor the mega houses, and if it takes changing the ordinance to make it economically feasible to build hotels again, then I think, you know, that should be looked at and done and figure out how to do it, how to bring more hotels back to this area. And if it takes going to, if the answer is going to 50 feet, then I think it should be done. And it can be limited. I mean, it can be, you can start off with three hotels at 50 feet, and then it could be reviewed after that, after three hotels were built, and see if there's need to modify it at that time. Or you could approach it very, very carefully going forward to make sure it works for the community.
Cheers. About 10 seconds left.
Thank you. But you could put some kind of limit on it, and in conclusion, I believe that the, if the height limit is a parameter that needs to be changed to make it economically feasible to build hotels, then the height limit should be changed. But it's only for those, only for those specific hotels, and there's very little room to build hotels, as you know. So it's not like it's going to change the community dramatically, what space is left. Thank you very much.
Thanks, John. Thanks. David Henderson?
Hello, my name's David Henderson. I'm a property owner at 1502 Monument Lane Business Center at 2603 North Carrot Town Highway. And I am definitely in opposition of raising hotel heights. I think that the appeal of our area is that we don't look like other beaches like Ocean City, Maryland, Virginia Beach. I was up in Virginia Beach a few days ago. I've never really been to there, to the beach area. I was walking down the boardwalk and up the beach and just thinking, "Man, I'm glad I'm not here. I'm glad I don't live here. This place is just not, not what attracts me." And I think that what attracts the people that drive past all these places to come all the way out here is that the aesthetics of our area are not that overbuilt look and it's just, to me, a more friendly environment. And I think that's what is the appeal to our area. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thanks, David.
I'm gonna move on to the public comment list. If any of these comments are not intended for the public hearing or the issues we're facing right now with the high limitations, we will have a moment set aside for public comment later. Paul Munson?
Thank you. I'm Paul Munson. I live in Kill Devil Hills and I apologize for signing the wrong forms. I don't think many of us are opposed to the idea of a hotel being built. I mean, we all get that building's decayed, they need updating, especially this kind of environment. I do think, however, raising hotels high is not in the best interest of this place. Environmentally, I don't know how much more of a strain that will put on our water and sewers and septic and all that kind of stuff, but I do think it would add more. I also think that it will detract from, you know, property owners here, because it does take away the uniqueness of this place. You hear repeatedly, people talk about the family atmosphere here, and I do think that's a definite issue we have. I think that's an advantage that we have. I do agree with the owner who said that people who drive right past Virginia Beach to come here because of the uniqueness of this place. I can tell you that just this past Friday, I was in Doug Donuts and I took, I struck up a conversation with a person from Kansas, small places. And I, of course, I told him, "Thank you very much for driving all this way when you could have turned left and gone to California just as easily." And the thing is, the thing that brought them here was this atmosphere, what we have. They've been to California, they've been to Virginia Beach and such, but this place is different. And I think that, I think that raising, raising a hotel too high takes away the uniqueness that we have and will make us more look like, you know, Virginia Beach, South Carolina, what have you. I mean, and let's not forget, I mean, yeah, this is great, everybody comes to the beach, they have a great time, but we're in competition with those kind of beaches also. And we need to have those things to kind of make us, step us aside from Virginia Beach, Royal Beach, what have you. And if we start having these higher hotels, you know, it kind of takes away the uniqueness. And my fear is that the people that come here year after year after year, bring their children year after year after year, and that cycle continues. If we start having high-rise hotels, then it's kind of why I come here when I go to Virginia Beach. Why drive past Virginia Beach when Deer County's got the same thing as Virginia Beach does with all their accommodations? Well, I can say, I'm not against the idea of hotels being built, because you need those kind of things, but my concern is the height. And I don't think, I don't think that's something we should be doing. Thank you.
Mr. Woodard?
I believe I signed the right form, regular public comment.
Brent Nultemeyer? I don't know if I said that correctly.
Yep. All right. My name is Brent Nultemeyer. I'm a resident of Deer County for 12 years. And I posted a photo on Facebook on my website that's for OBX Surf Info. It's basically, it says, "Keep the Outer Banks a beach town and not another city by the sea." I found overwhelmingly, the outpour of people that comment on this are completely opposed to going higher. We've had 572 shares of this photo, 40 comments, 90% of them probably, or should I say, 90% are against going higher, and 92 dislikes. So nobody really wants this that I can see in our community, and this is both tourists and local people in the area. I know it's just Facebook and opinions can fly freely, but, you know, for what it is, people do care and they do speak out, and that's what they've done here, and I just wanted to point that out. This is probably my third meeting on this issue that I've been to here, and I don't know what else you guys need to hear, but this is, you know, pretty important, I think. So anyway, that's all. Thank you.
All right, that's all if people signed up. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Ryan?
My name's Matt Pruitt. I'm a writer, editor. I work for Surfline. I posted on the subject on Surfline, I work with Matt sometimes. One thing, and this is just regarding high-rise hotels, oceanfront, I don't know where else it's being considered, but one concern I have is the sand. I think before rushing to judgment on anything like this, we need to consult with some kind of, you know, the engineers, any kind of marine scientists that have done these studies, but I know that driving on the beach around here, using the Sea Ranch as an example, that's a hotspot. That's notoriously, a lot of people get stuck there. And, you know, there may be, you know, whether it's myth or fact, but general consensus among surfers around here, who've been here for a long time, surfing here for 30-plus years, and I've talked about it with guys like Matt and Brian and Matt, it seems that our sandbars and the nourishment that's being done, it seems like it's, things are different around the areas where they're, around Sea Ranch specifically. It's affected us kind of negatively as far as that, as far as natural sand shift. So I think until we get some kind of scientific perspective on how much extra work is usually done in that area to nourish the beach, to keep it drivable, to keep it even inhabitable. Another thing is, from a surfing perspective, Kill Devil Hills is by and large the most popular surfing zone in the northern Outer Banks. Kitty Hawk, Mack's Head, even Hatters, all that stuff comes and goes. Kill Devil Hills is pretty much the given. It's proven itself to be that, you know, 30, 40 years. So, and a dense local surfing population at that, where are those people gonna go? I'm gonna tell you where they're gonna go. They're gonna park in the hotel lots, just like we always do. That's more problems for police. When they can't do that, what do we do? We park across the street in residence yards, in tourist rentals, I mean, anywhere we can get it. There's more traffic, people have to go somewhere, you know what I mean? It's not like a Roche motel. You're just kind of like, "Look, pull over, force them over here." That's gonna cause even more problems. You know, you put up something to accommodate some people, and what about all the other people? They gotta go somewhere. And they're not gonna stop surfing, I'll tell you that. The youth, the young surfing population, the local second generation, third generation on the beach now, they're all over Kill Devil Hills. They always will. They're rats. And that's what we call, we call rats. So I just think that that should be considered, number one, the sand, and number two, it's the most popular surfing area in the whole Outer Banks, more so even than Hatters. Where are they gonna go? And how much of the hassle is that gonna cause for the hotel owners, the hotel guests, people wishing to drive on the beach in the off-season, you know, this and that? There ain't much area to go in around here. And that's it. Matt Pruitt, I'm against it. Thanks.
Would anyone else like to speak?
I'm a resident of 1403 Harpoon Corp. here in KDH. I think most of the points have been made, so I just want to speak out in opposition as well, just to make that known. I think the one interesting thing, if you want to represent your constituency, I don't think you've heard from anybody yet in favor of this potential change that actually is living in Kill Devil Hills. So I think that's interesting to note. I mean, I agree that we need this variety, this diversity of areas that people can come and stay, right, for weeks or for a day. But that doesn't justify increasing the current height of hotels. There are hotels here, they can be changed. We don't need increased height. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, everybody. I'm Amelia Hooper and I'm a farm resident of Kill Devil Hills. And I think most everybody has made our points, so I hate to be reiterating points that have already been made, but this town was built on fishing and surfing, and there's a lot to be said for that. It's a whole part of our culture, and when we remove that, we really are becoming another Rehoboth, another Virginia Beach, another Royal Beach. It is important that we make sure that vacationers have all income levels and amount of time they have available to stay. It is important that we consider those, and that's something that we can actually do within the homes that we already have. But I think that by removing the green spaces that we're removing and increasing the building heights, that we really are creating an environment that's gonna turn away the very people who've built the Outer Banks.
Hello, thanks for letting me speak. My name's Hart Hall, a 13-year resident of Kill Devil Hills, small business owner and own a couple investment properties for rental down here as well. Just kind of reiterating what everyone else has said, I guess the character of the beach, I think, is at risk. I think we do have a brand that very much is that, you know, old-school cottage on the sand that, you know, little by little is disappearing and, you know, this is kind
of one more medium for, you know, pardon the pun, erosion of that image, that brand, and why people come down, why people come down here? You know, aside from the ecological risks, you know, I kind of always think of the comfort in south is like, you know, "How's that thing even still here?", you know? And, you know, just putting, you know, some more massive structures of that size in a very, very dynamic environment is shortsighted at best and reckless at worst, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else?
And, you know, this is kind of one more medium for, you know, pardon the pun, erosion of that image, that brand, and why people come down here. You know, aside from the ecological risks, you know, I kind of always think of the comfort in south is like, you know, how's that thing even still here, you know? And, you know, just putting, you know, some more massive structures of that size in a very, very dynamic environment is short-sighted at best and reckless at worst. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else? Is the applicant here? Would the applicant like to speak?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Just one of these.
Yeah, hi. I'm Jeff Fabrikant. A little presentation to give you guys. I'll run this through this quickly. Yeah, I'm here with Randy Saunders and Ben Kehon is here as well, if you have any technical questions. I know we've been at this for a while. The request is quite simply just for eight additional feet. Eight feet is about that much height. In exchange, we were proposing for five additional feet of setback on each side of the building, which would allow for a public beach access through an easement. I'd like to just spend a few minutes sort of giving the why, maybe answer some of the objections that some of the speakers before me have, maybe not. I know we can all agree with this for you sometimes. That said, there we go. I just want to quickly take everybody back to the 80s. This was about 30 years ago. I was a kid. Technology looked very different. Phones were quite large. Reagan was our president. And it also happened to be the last time the hotel was built in Kill Devil Hills, which is about 30 years ago, on the oceanfront. Almost a generation. More relevant to what we're discussing tonight and some of the concerns that people brought up, a lot has changed in construction and in building more environmentally friendly, LEED certifications. We don't build on grade. We're outside of the flood plain. Wastewater technology's dramatically improved. A new hotel would be built to commercial standards, which would include sprinkler, it would be ADA-friendly, and as we know, a lot of hotels are older, some are grandfathered. So there's a lot of benefits to new technology, new materials. Next couple slides, I call it the state of the oceanfront. Did a little bit of research and publicly available information, and essentially it's sort of a summary of what's built on the oceanfront right now by bedroom. The largest section of this pie graph you can see is houses, followed by hotels and then condos. And coincidentally or not, houses are the only section of this pie that happen to be growing. And we'll get to that next. This summarizes the development over the last almost 30 years on the Kill Devil Hills oceanfront. And you can see on the right-hand side, there's been almost 100 homes built on the oceanfront, which is about 1,000 bedrooms, mostly larger homes of the last 25. There's been only two new condos, and those were nine years ago, and there's been zero oceanfront hotels. And as of, you sit here today, I'm not aware of any new condos in the pipeline or any new hotels. And, you know, so houses, our bottom line, houses are what's getting built. And the last 10 houses that were permitted, that I saw actually average close to 16 bedrooms. So that's what the markets tell us. This is just a quick slide on restaurants and bars. What it looked like 30 years ago, there were five that I was able to find. Now there're just two. You know, a new hotel would almost certainly have a food or dining option, maybe an oceanfront This is a slide summarizing the hotels. As mentioned before, there is a very limited number of hotel sites. There are 11 hotels with about 900 rooms. That coincidentally is slightly less than the number of rooms that were lost in the last 16 years in Derek County. Now that includes Nax Head. The other number that's key is, the average age of the hotels is about 41 years old. And I list here four, what I call underdeveloped hotels. Those are essentially low FAR or one or two stories. And as far as vacant parcels, I'm not aware of any that are enough size and scale that you could build a hotel. And I think it'd be very impossible or unlikely to assemble more than one or two existing houses. So I think it's pretty, you know, it's just not feasible for any other sites to become Of those 11 oceanfront hotels, 27% or three of them are actually already at 50 feet or five stories. We've got the Sea Ranch, Best Western, and the Ramada. And all three of those are built on grade, flat roofs, and parking in front. And so, again, our request to go from 42 to 50 is not, it is an increase in current rates, but it's essentially going back to where it was back before the regulations changed in the mid-'80s. At the planning board meeting, they voted against three to two, as most of you are aware, although the commissioner or chairman clout did voice support, so it was pretty balanced. The land use plan was kind of the number one reason in the survey, but I think we can all agree that's dated, and I know that the board is looking into updating that now. But I think those results are just not relevant to our discussion today. This slippery slope argument is what I call it, where we say, "Well, if you give us eight feet, next thing you know, it's 10 stories, 15 stories." You know, that's, we're not gonna become Virginia Beach. It's not possible. There's too many constraints on the land. You have camera setbacks, septic requirements, onsite parking, wastewater, whatnot. And then the last point, the shadow on the beach argument, we've talked about this before, but with any large structure, it has to be at least 135 feet back. And some of you have seen this, I think this was done by Ben Kehon a couple years ago. And this is sort of just geometry showing the sun moving sort of to the left on your screen. And given the large structure setbacks, by the time a building causes a shadow, the shadow's already been caused by the dune. And in fact, if you see the one angle here, the houses, even though they're shorter, potentially cause more of a shadow because they only have to be 60 foot back from the toe of the This slide just lists some of the pro-economic reasons, and I don't need to go sort of through all these. I mean, most people understand that hotels have a lot of year-round jobs. Adds to the diversification of the tax base, both from real estate and from a sales and And then last but not least, you know, lots have changed in 30 years since hotels were built. You know, family size has shrunk. And from a tourism standpoint, I do think there is an importance of having hotels. A lot of people can't afford staying here for a week, or don't have enough family members they want a vacation with for seven days, or can fit, you know, a 10-bedroom house. I think the only other point I want to make is, for the shoulder season and for a lot of the events, and I can speak personally, that a lot of events like the marathon and the seafood festivals, they do draw a lot of tourists, but a lot of those don't stay a night, or they stay one night. And so, vacation rentals, while I'm a big fan of, they're not suited to turning over several times a week.
I have a quick question for you. Do you consider pets part of the model family?
Sure.
So it wouldn't be a pet-friendly hotel?
Sure.
No debate, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Bottom line is, I think, you know, you can't necessarily compare a vacation rental to a hotel. It's not suited to turn nightly, and therefore, hopefully, maybe there's some agreement that it would be in the best interest of the town 30 years from now to have some new hotels. And with that, I will conclude my remarks, and I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Brett. Thanks. Are there any additional comments prior to turning this over to the board for discussion?
Can I make a second one?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I stay here?
No, ma'am. You do have to come to the line.
Now, most people would say it was plenty loud enough. So, we appreciate you coming down and sharing your thoughts with us. There's a couple of things that just jumped out at me in that presentation. One, I believe that there's a beach access, a public beach access that is adjacent or within a few feet of the property that we're discussing. So while opening up that extra easement on the side might be nice, it's not gonna actually provide something that isn't already provided. He cited that the housing market was the only slice of the pie which is actually growing. I think many of us are defining growth in different ways. In my novice opinion, a 16-bedroom home is a hotel. It's awfully close to it. It's not a home. It's definitely not a single-family home. Many of us feel, as Herman Hall had said before, that we're growing ourselves out of the market. And we hate to make you sort of our, like, give and take at the moment, but since you've asked for this, and it's helping us to define what is okay and what is not okay in our town. And I think what we're finding is that we are growing ourselves out of the community that we would like to be. And sometimes, we can look at growth as far as quality versus quantity. I think we have enough quantity that's grossly lacking in quality. And while your hotel, a remodel of your hotel might bring the quality, we still have this as a community, as a major issue within our community. VRBO and Airbnb have helped to fill the need for the one-night rentals, one-to-two-night rentals, and it's actually something that is driving income directly into our community versus going directly out as the corporation. They're based out of Virginia, is that correct? Would be leaving our local economy, essentially. And I think a lot of us feel like we're already becoming BB. Like you said, we could never get there. I think we're already there. So I think that most of us are looking to increase quality without increasing quality and to kind of go back to our roots a little bit.
Is that it?
Thank you. Before the board begins discussion, thank you all, everyone that's here that came out to voice their opinion, one side or the other. It's important to be engaged in your government and your, you know, what's happening in your local, and in your local community. And it really does mean a lot to us to hear from the citizens and the applicant as well. So, thank you all. With that, we'll open the floor for discussion. You're first? You're ready?
There's certainly been a lot of emails come through, and I haven't seen but two, three, if you count the applicant that has been in support of this. And so, I think people have spoken that this is not something they want, and I feel the same, especially with the possibility of having a land use plan. So I would be a favor of supporting this until after this, with a land use plan.
I would agree with that. The land use plan, we know we're looking at that, and that's gonna give everybody an official capacity to be able to respond to potentially a future direction for everything that we're working on. But we rarely have an issue where you don't get some level of support that's not a tenth of a percent. I think folks have spoken loud and clear. This is what I think, you know.
I have to agree. I, again, came in with an open mind, wanting to hear what everybody had to say. I've been listening as well and receiving the same emails that you have. Again, I work in the public forum, as do you, and hear this on a daily basis, and I as well have not heard any support at all for this from the citizens of Kill Devil Hills or from the visitors, for that matter. So it's very different, as you say, to not have, usually, we talked about this earlier, usually when you have an issue, it's two-sided, and it's very difficult to weigh that. This one, for me, is not, because I really have not, other than just what you're talking about, the applicant. And one other that was kind of a little confusing to me, really, there has been none that were really, really strong supporters, other than the applicant. So I have to say, at this time, especially with the land use plan, because the one, even though it's old, I think we'll find, especially after talking with the public, I think we'll find the new land use plan actually follows in a very similar direction as what that was, the old one was. Because I don't think, from talking to the people, and I've spoken with more than a few dozen, and I think that we'll see that whoever said that people pass through several different places to get here because it's unique, that's what it's all about, and that's what people say.
Yeah, I'd like to point out, we've all been getting emails, and they've been sent to the town and to some of us personally. Of course, our great staff keeps track of things like that, and there's 35 correspondences we've had that people are against it, raising the height. And there was two in favor of it, and the two were the Chamber of Commerce and the Board of Realtors. And as Mr. Massey pointed out, he wasn't canvassed about his feelings on it, even though he's a member of one of those organizations. And we saw that on another issue, where the organization was one way, and members seemed to be going the other way. I think we have to be careful of giving that too much weight. The other thing I wanted to mention, too, is Mr. Fabrikant in his presentation said that there's too many constraints to make our place look like Virginia Beach or some other place. And I like to think that one of those constraints is the building height. So, it's not the only thing, of course, and it might be a minor part of it, but it is a part. It's a part that I like to keep where it is.
As far as my position on this topic, I'll just give a little bit of history. I met with Jeff and Rudy, goodness, probably nine months ago, it could have been more, when they were first conceptually looking at this. And I remember saying, and I don't even know if we had a specific figure that they were tossing out then, but I think my position here is to be open-minded, to explore what people are looking for. And then I also remember speaking with them, saying, "I'll have an open mind and look at it, but if the citizenry and if the people are strongly against it, then I wouldn't be able to support it." And so, like you all have indicated, you all did come out, you've spoken strongly, you've emailed strongly. That being said, and that is where my position is, is to be in line with the people that I represent. We also have received some emails from people going, "Why are you looking at this again? Why are you talking about this again?" And that is our responsibility as well, to do that, when folks want to explore, if they have an idea that thinks their idea may contribute to something better in our community. We have a responsibility to look at that as well. And I appreciate some of the comments that were shared about looking at the diversity of our accommodations and being mindful of that, and hopefully that we do have places for those who want to try the Outer Banks for the first time, that are on a limited budget, that they have those opportunities to do that. That being said, I think the land use plan that you've heard all of us now mention, just two meetings ago, we made steps to start working on the new land use plan. We'll actually start this summer, later this summer. The first part of that process is a community survey. So certainly, we hope everybody that's in the room will not only complete the survey, but ask 10 or 12 friends to complete the survey. Our goal with this survey this time is to make some more specific questions, or add some more specific questions. And for example, one of them could be, you know, would you be in "Would you be in favor of increasing height to allow more diversification in accommodations?" But I think for purposes of tonight and for purposes of this ordinance, we have heard loud and clear where the citizenry and the guest and the large amount of stakeholders, where they stand in this position. And so with that, I would be able to support it as well. We need to make that official. With that, do you need a motion?
I will make a motion to disapprove the amendment. As the Board of Commissioners finds that this proposed amendment to Chapter 153 zoning, 153.099D, building height limits, changes of development regulations for hotels and motels in the ocean impact residential zone, including the increase in the allowable height subject to additional criteria, is inconsistent with all comprehensive plans or other official adopted plans of the town of Kill Devil Hills that are applicable and that the amendment is unreasonable in the public interest because it disrupts the tiered approach to zoning and it violates our current land use plan.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, I just have one thing that maybe puts some people a little bit more comfortable. This will be a done conversation for the next two years. Is that correct?
There's some things to say. Mayor, do you have information on that?
I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but there's a provision of the ordinance, when amendment is made and denied by the board, it cannot be resubmitted or reconsidered for two years unless brought forward by staff.
Mayor, the language as submitted tonight...
The exact same, the exact same ordinance, the exact same language. Something could be different.
Right. This wasn't the same language that was submitted before. And that got its due process. This got its due process. And should a change in this language be submitted in the future, then it would also be in time.
Did everyone in the audience hear that? Just to make sure everybody heard. Okay. Didn't that answer your question as well? Okay. Okay. Motion, second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say no saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you all again. And with that, turn back over to you for the next public hearing.
The second public hearing will please come to order. This hearing is called for the purpose of the Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners to consider the following: Town Management Recommended Budget for the 2017-2018 fiscal year. All right. Bring it back to order. Okay. So I've called out everybody on the sheet of the Commissioner Woodard who... Is this the issue you want to speak on?
No, no.
Okay. Just clear, just making sure. So is there anybody who would like to talk about the recommended budget for 2017-18?
Well, maybe a better, the county needs some funds.
Let's hold those comments.
All right. That being said, I'll turn it over. Is there one?
Discussion, comments, board?
I don't have anything additional, although I think it's interesting that the budget has less interest than eight feet. But that's true.
As I stated in the budget workshop, I'll reiterate here that commend staff, all department heads and finance staff, and Debbie for putting together such a solid budget. One thing, if you've looked at the budget, the recommendations that came forth from the department heads were in line with the recommendations that came forth from the town manager, pretty much, you know, I would say in the ninety-ninth percentile as far as that matching up. And when that happens, one, it makes it a little bit easier on the manager from, on him to figure out what to cut. But I think it also is just a testament to the solid work that the department heads did in looking at their budgets, knowing what's realistic, what we need versus maybe what they want. So kudos to the hard work that everybody put in. And with that, I think we're ready to schedule this for adoption, our June 28 meeting. If there's anyone's in agreement. Okay. Thank you. Okay. We will move on then to public comment. And Chairman Woodard, welcome. You are first up.
Well, Bob Woodard, 2305 Bay Drive, Kill Devil Hills. Mayor, y'all certainly know how to clear a room. Give credit for that. I'm here, it's been about a year and a half, and I'm here just to tell this boy thank you. Mayor and Board of Commissioners, Town Manager Debbie. The, I don't know if you've been out to see the nourishment that's been done so far in Duck, but I want to thank this board for having the fortitude to join Duck and Kitty Hawk in the county for this major beach nourishment project. And just within the last month or two, adding Southern Shores in that mix. If you haven't had an opportunity, it is phenomenal to see what's being done in Duck. To see 300 feet of beach is quite incredible. They have a 20-foot dune there, 20 feet from the beach level. It's 20 feet wide. And it slopes from that top 20-foot level down to the beach level, some 75 feet. Then you have 300 feet of beach beyond that. Totally incredible to see. Great Lakes now will have three dredges on site. I see y'all's timeline has stepped up. And it's very, very encouraging to see. There's one gentleman, he's probably left, but I can foresee, I built in 1968 on Wyandotte in Kill Devil Hills. And I had 300 feet of beach that I'd go to in front of the sea range. Well, hopefully they're going to have that 300 feet again, or at least 250, 200 feet. So we'll see that come back. But once again, I'm just here to say thank you for partnering with the county, Duck, Kitty Hawk, Southern Shores to make this happen. This is our lifeline. We need to be nourished to keep those visitors coming and to keep our economy surviving. So once again, I just want to say thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes.
Thank you, Bob. And certainly thank you as well to the county for the support and also helping bring the projects together. One major project that ends up saving all of us a significant amount of money. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this public comment time? Yes. Welcome. Sure.
James Almany, 999th Avenue. I'd like to talk a little bit about the nuisance ordinance that we're going to look at in the town abatement. I've had a little bit of experience in my career as far as fire damage to houses and how people react to it. And that's really what my big concern is here. When people's houses are partially damaged and they still have some items left in there that they don't want anybody to touch, they're very quick to secure the building. So the safety issue is certainly out of the way. The problem exists when the fire or the fire damaged house is beyond repair. You know, everybody, all their stuff is damaged, there's nothing they can do with it. Now they're not so quick to make sure that their houses are secured. And because it creates such a strong safety issue, I think that we need to be a little more proactive with how we go about this. You know, I understand that, you know, chronic violators, you know, we don't want to do anything with that. We don't want to do anything if, you know, somebody's door is hanging off. I understand all that. But when there's safety involved, kids passing by playing in there, homeless people living in there, animals, feral cats hanging out in the house, whatever that happens to be, it seems like the process for getting the situation taken care of is so long that it becomes impossible. You know, when you think about the man-hours involved, the money, the attorney's fees to file suit against these people, the filing fees, and again, the length of time that this takes and the chance that we could have somebody seriously hurt. I know that we received something in one of the committees that I'm on that talks about the general statute 168, 193, that says allows the municipality unilaterally and summarily proceed to abate a nuisance, but only if the nuisance qualifies as being dangerous or prejudicial to public health or safety. Well, I think, you know, with a house damaged so badly, you know, I know that there's, you can be subjective about whether something is really dangerous. But in a situation like that, with a fire that's burned in a house, there's structural damage, there's a chance that somebody really could be hurt badly. So the fact, that to me says that we're allowed to go in, board that building up, that house up, and take care of the issue. You know, and the money that it, and costs and man-hours to do that has to be much less than what it costs in the man-hours and the attorney's fees and the filing fees that takes us to try to push people to do this for any long period of time. You know, the fact that we have to hunt down people who don't necessarily live here, you know, and then we have to go through the court process and everything that goes along with that, it's just such a long period of time. And I think that, you know, and I understand that the town's reluctance to step on any toes or go on somebody's property. But I think that in particular cases like this, because it mentions another statute where it says typical circumstances. Well, I don't think that's a typical circumstance. A typical circumstance is somebody, you know, that just lets their house go to disrepair. This is something that happens, not very often, but when it does happen, I think that the town should step in and make sure that we provide safety for our community. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chairman Woodard.
We'll be obviously addressing this in just a little bit on our agenda. So appreciate your comments and we'll take these into consideration in just a few minutes. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at public comment? Okay. Well, then we will move on to item number one under, since we're going to deal with response during the agenda items, introductions and presentations. And we have one item that is updated, improved fire suppression rating in the town of Kill Devil Hills. Your person for us is welcome and congratulations. This is great news you're sharing with us.
It certainly is, Mayor. And I know you guys have been through a lot and heard a lot so far, so I'll try to cut back on a little bit of what we have going on. Recently, March 13th, we participated in our ISO inspection. Every fire department across the country knows what that is. It's the opportunity for the Office of State Fire Marshal to come and evaluate our department and place upon a national rating system that'll give you a class with a number. And it goes along with the insurance rating to see what, how it impacts every resident, commercial establishment here in our town. I'm happy to announce that we were rated as Class III. Last year or the year before that, or the last inspection, we were a Class IV. It's set up to where a Class I is superior fire protection. A Class X does not meet minimum standards. So we were able to approve on that. So what goes into an evaluation is, there's three different categories within your inspection. This is your Office of State Fire Marshal will look at your emergency communication center and evaluate how the E911 system receives and dispatches alarms. Another part of that is our water supply, how our hydrants are laid out, how big the mains are and that, and how often we inspect that. And then the bigger portion of it, which is 50%, is the fire department. There's a lot of different areas that go into that with our equipment, our people, how we are laid out within the town with our mapping and how close all aspects of the town are within that fire station. So back 12 years ago, we received that four. And ever since that point, the fire departments striving to improve that score. And we will continue to strive to do that. Our person was pushing for a Class II. We ended up 1.23 points away from getting that Class II. Class II would incorporate 2%, the top 2% of all North Carolina. But I'm still proud of that Class III. That puts us in the top 5% in North Carolina. So it's something to strive for and we will continue to strive in order to protect our community. Also want to take this time to thank y'all for the support that y'all give us here in public safety, especially here in the fire department, for y'all's support in making us and helping us be the best we possibly can.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief.
Do you want to know what it takes to get a one?
Yes.
It's people, making sure that we have the people that are going to get to our significant events, our structural fires, making sure the equipment's getting to the scene. We're actually working to get to that point right now to make sure that we have the people that are going to get there and take care of the emergencies that we have. Also with the layout that we have here in Kill Devil Hills, your fire station, a fire engine, an engine, not the one with the ladder on top, but the fire engine with the hoses and does all the pumping and everything like that, they go a mile and a half in all directions. The radius around the station. So if we would like to get to that Class I, we would probably need a station three miles from our current station. And then that would help us to generate that. But that's a significant amount of cost and everything like that.
I just saw what you done.
Be selling for next year.
Well, it's what you guys want and I'm here to deliver on what you want. If you want that Class I or if you're satisfied with Class II, then we can set up plans for the future. I mean, I think a Class II being the top 2% is a great accomplishment for any town. Top 2% is great. We're better than 98% of the fire departments in North Carolina. And I think we do need to have some challenges that we're going to face though. I mean, I think the biggest threat that we have here in our community is a significant weather event, a Cat 5 hurricane. And I would like to see us think about down the line, putting together a station that will withstand that Class 5 hurricane so that we could have our public safety facility in the center of the town to where we dispatch day-to-day operations out of that public safety facility. And then if that hurricane is coming to approach us, we can plan our response to that. Once the storm gets here, we can hunker down inside that facility and wait for the storm to pass and then plan our response and how we can deploy from that facility so that we can try to recover and get to some type of normalcy within our town. But that's just some of the ideas that I have. I feel like that's part of my job is to help plan out the future for the fire department and the safety of our town.
Absolutely. Appreciate your vision, appreciate your hard work and that of all of your personnel. To be right now with a three rating and to be in the top 5% is a significant accomplishment and much to be proud of. So thank you for your leadership.
Do you think that's something Chairman Woodard would like to be a part of?
He cleared out of the room, didn't he, before we started talking? Yeah, that's great. Okay, we will move down then to new business, item number one. This is a appointment to the Board of Adjustment for an alternate position. Currently, Ron Seaman holds that position. And he has expressed an interest in continuing to serve as the alternate. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Ron.
Awesome.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say no saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The second item under new business is the recommended amendment to Chapter 93, nuisances, Section 93.04, abatement by the town. Hey, so do you mind giving kind of an introduction, some background, Debbie, on this? And then we can talk a little bit about it in context with Mr. Almany's comments.
No problem at all, Mayor. So prior, we, the way our ordinance read, there was really no way to distinguish the process by which we are allowed as a town to go on and abate a nuisance. We've got a scenario where we've got some chronic violators, which is a... We've got a scenario where we've got some chronic violators, which is they've been cited for the same particular violation three times within a year without any form of abatement, without any form of cure, I'm sorry, they cure the issue and then are recited three times within a calendar year. That's your definition of a chronic violator. So, in those scenarios, if a landowner were to be classified as a chronic violator, then we're allowed to go on summarily abate without any direction from the court, without any form of court intervention whatsoever. So, the issue comes down to, well, what about everything else? Because oftentimes, we're dealing with something that's not a chronic situation. And the way our court order read, there was no specificity whatsoever as to whether our court's involvement was required, or whether we could just go on in our own accord and do what we needed to do to abate the nuisance. So, went to the school of government to get some opinions on what municipalities, well, really, what their reach was so far as these particular issues are concerned, and really what we were looking to do here was to define the typical scenario within a town when a nuisance exists, when the homeowner gets that notice and fails to take action within the 15-day period. We were trying to put forward a clear process within the amendment or within the ordinance itself. And I do, I will say, probably one of the questions coming is, well, what would we do in a scenario where, like Mr. Almany has described? And, you know, my position would be this, we put forth a process here, and anytime you're talking about a standard as high as prejudicial to health or human safety, it's snowballs bar. I mean, we can go in and do what we need to do to make sure that the public is protected. That's our job. There's far more liability to not go and protect the public than there is to worry about whether or not we're violating our own laws. So, this ordinance is, again, designed to put forth more of the standard nuisance, the rubbish or something of that nature. And if we're dealt with, get a situation where we feel like if we don't take immediate action, that somebody within the public is gonna be harmed, then I think, under the law, we would have the authority to do that, even though this statute now specifically talks about, talks about a court order. Again, I think it's just a different creature altogether. And, you know, if we don't set forth some form of process, then we put, we put the town in a scenario where they're playing judge, jury, and executioner, and that can often get you in trouble. You know, if you are making the discretionary call, if staff's making the discretionary call as to whether or not to go onto somebody's property to take action, then attempt to collect that money back from the homeowner, you wanna, you wanna be, you just wanna be careful. And I think that was, that was the overall intent of this amendment, but of course, we'd be, we'd be open, and I could provide advice on anything that you guys would like to see, like to see in the.
So, from what you were just describing, where there's an immediate issue, or where it's public health or safety, you see that more as, I mean, I, if I understand you correctly, we have the purview at that point to take immediate action and not, you're not even bound to anything in an ordinance.
That would, that would be the position that I would take, absolutely. In a scenario, I just think you enter, you enter a different world at that point, so...
And with it, then distinguishing between a violator and a chronic violator, do we...
We've got a definition within the code that actually does that for us. So, where you get, right now, the gray area seems to be, you know, the scenario from, like I said, the typical, the gathering of rubbish, and then again, as Mr. Almany said, a scenario where the particular nuisance, whether created by the person or not, the property exists in a certain form or another, and it's causing, again, a scenario where the jeopardy of the public, or the safety of the public is jeopardized. And I, those seem to be, I think, in our discussions at least, in staff and in my office, just few and far between, and it's, this at least puts us, it gives us some kind of guidance on what we need to do, and it takes certain pressures off of the staff. You know, we've got, we've got an action, and we need to go get a judge's opinion. But again, if we're, I think, yes, if we're in that scenario, I think we would have more than a leg to stand on to explain, if we're ever held in a court or something of that nature, to explain why we took the measures that we did to protect, again, the public health, and those extreme, in those extreme situations.
And so, and the, and that's, we're gonna have to take on a case-by-case basis. So, for example, if, if we had a situation like, there was one not too long ago with a house that was significantly damaged in a fire, we worked through the channels and communication, there were out-of-town folks, and they seemed to be responsive, but it still would take time, and then it would happen. If we thought that it was a serious enough threat for safety or children being able to get in that home, that the windows weren't bound up, then we need to bring that forth, and that's where we may honestly circumvent the ordinance and feel like if it warrants enough, that we may jump from the ordinance and direct, make staff decision, or make a town decision.
An executive decision, absolutely. That's how I would.
Board it up.
Absolutely.
Send the bill.
And, and I think that, you know, there's a possibility that we could, we could better define that here, but again, then you're back into the scenario, well, how do I put that into words? It's the same thing that we're essentially trying to avoid right here, which is placing that discretionary decision on the staff's shoulders. So, then, we put something here in words, and if I'm using those buzzwords, or it's prejudicial to health, and here, well, what's, to one person, that might mean something opposed to the next.
That's for a case specific, and you define it so we're ready to go.
Right, I agree. And, you know, in those, I think in those scenarios, like you just said, communication's the key. I mean, many times, if we get responses, we can work with that. I mean, because this is here doesn't mean that, you know, that's the only thing that's gonna bring resolve to the particular scenario, a court order. I mean, obviously, we try to avoid that at all costs. So, you know, I think, I think for those, for those more extreme cases that we can absolutely circumvent, as you said, that's a great way to put it, and I think we would 100% have the authority to move and take the action. And again, I believe part of our job is to serve, you know, to protect and to watch out for our public, so...
I had a question on whether it's a minor issue, like we're talking about rubbish, or a more extreme case, like was mentioned. Does the town provide the staff to do that? Do we hire a contractor? How, what's, do we have a process for that, or is that a case-by-case?
Case-by-case.
And if it, whatever the charges are, it's possible to charge back the property owner, whether it's a lien or a direct invoice or anything like that?
And the court order would implement, I mean, it would put that in stuff. That would be part of any order that we would ever give a judge in that particular scenario. And the chronic violator situation, we're allowed to do that by ordinance and by North Carolina General Inspection.
So, I mean, we'd be, at that point, relying, maybe the police have responded to a situation or fire has responded to a situation where they could notify staff, town, it doesn't have to come to a board meeting.
Right.
It's just coming into the staff to be, as a situation. I'll give advice where I can.
As far as action by the board on the recommended amendment?
I like it. I think we had one email that said that it was potentially gonna slow down the process. I still like the idea of having the courts involved, so I think.
The only, I guess the only thing I would have asked that person is, what right now do you envision is the process? Like, if you can explain to me what you think the process actually is, you know, I'm not making light of the scenario, I'm saying, I think that if they understood the way it really works, this, this helps the town certainly more than it does slow down, slow down anything.
Any other comments? Anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the recommended amendment to Chapter 93, nuisances, Section 93.04, abatement by the town.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signal saying aye.
Aye.
Any offense? Thank you. Next is Commissioners' agenda.
Just a congratulations to all first-plate graduates.
Including your son.
My son. It was a fantastic ceremony, and the weather cooperated after a nasty week, so we were able to do it outside, and it was still a nice thing, with the full moon rising behind us.
Wow, that's great.
Proud of all of us.
That's great.
Good evening.
Sound good, thanks.
Okay. Under Mayor's agenda, you may have heard Chairman Woodard mentioned our timeline has changed for beach nourishment, so just wanted to touch on that briefly. If you haven't started following the page, More Beach to Love, please consider doing so. You can also sign up for email alerts specifically, or you can sign up for every project, but you can sign up on the left-hand side, specific to Kill Devil Hills, if you wish. You'll get an email pretty soon, pretty much daily, with where they are, where they're moving as far as our project. But we did release a media release on Friday, yeah, I was like, which day? Kind of explaining the whys and the hows, and it's just part of the uncertainty of the process, but they're mobilizing now, and we'll see dredging begin within the next few weeks, so stay tuned. But I really would encourage you to link to, or sign up for an email alert, or if not, just visit that page daily, but it is very exciting.
Sorry. That would tell you where they're gonna be at certain...
We've got a map of the area, but yes, it will track the progress as they're moving along, yes. If either you want to avoid that area, or you want to go to that area to see it, because it is pretty amazing to watch as well, so plan accordingly, but yeah. That's all I have to say. Yes.
Sorry, go backwards, but that did remind me, once we start putting sand on the beach, it'd be nice if we could all go out there and maybe as a group and just see it. I mean, I haven't seen some of the equipment, I don't know if we weren't a group, which we'd be allowed to get as close as maybe we'd like to, I don't know if that's possible.
Yeah, no, it can definitely be.
Good, that's a good idea.
There are bi-weekly conference calls, the mayors and managers and planning staff are on those calls sometimes, too, yes, all the time. And I've gone into a couple of them, but they, you know, give an overview of what's going on throughout the projects. Obviously, it's been heavily Duck-focused at this point, but that's where we learn of things that may be affecting the dredge company, or if they have to move dredges or change because of weather, and then alerts, media alerts, or updates are emailed after those meetings based on what's discussed as well, so... But they did make amendments on those conference calls, that they'd be happy to make individual appointments to get you up close and personal to see what's going on. Okay, that's all I have this evening. Move on then to Town Managers' Agenda. Town Attorneys' Agenda.
Nothing, ma'am, thank you.
Consent Agenda.
Yes, ma'am, just a couple of items. The first, amendments from May 31st, 2017. And second, three budget amendments. The first one is to record the sand pits grant from Dare County. The second is to record the FEMA reinforcement funds from Hurricane Matthew. And lastly, the FEMA funds from Hurricane Matthew to rebuild Aviation Park, hockey rink, and staff recruitment. Is that a judge that has percentage?
Is there a motion?
Sound good.
Second.
Any discussion? Just quickly, any discussion? Meredith, thank you for all your hard work on giving that funding for the repair of the hockey rink, so...
I will be bringing an update to you as soon as I get straight with the engineer.
Okay, thank you for that, too, but I appreciate all your hard work, because that has been a process to get that funded.
It's a lot of money, too.
So, that, we have a motion in a second. Any other comments or discussion? All those in favor, please signal saying aye.
Aye.
Any offense? We'll move on then to the second time set aside this evening for public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to speak at this public comment time? Retired? Okay, then, really, anything else for the good of the group? Motion to adjourn.
Sound good.
All those in favor, please signal saying aye. Thank you, have a nice evening.
As a meeting first.